Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for October the 19th, 2023. It is 7:04 PM. I am the chairman, Michael O'Reilly. Y'all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll go on to call the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic Smigalino, alternate commissioner.
It's you, alternate.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Liam Ambrosi, commissioner.
Robert Westland, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Will Osford, staff.
Sarah Strad, recording secretary.
Thank you, everyone. I don't think we need to see an alternate, do you?
Yes.
Are we?
We have four.
We'll be voting on something?
Yeah.
So then we should.
Okay, who's next up on the list?
Dominic Panichia.
All right, like the record show, Dominic Panichia is seated for tonight's meeting. At this point, we'll have general public participation. This is the time when the public is invited to speak to the commission on matters that are not before the commission. So when we have a hearing, a public hearing, or when we have one pending, if anyone from the general public wants to speak about that hearing, it has to be at that time. So hearings that come up next month or the month after, those topics would have to be discussed at that time. At this time is for general public participation and anything that is not before us.
Up to the mic.
If it's a public hearing or pending public hearing, can that be discussed?
Well, I don't know what you're going to talk about with the 99 homes.
Go ahead and ask them, we'll let you know. Go ahead, just name an address for the record.
Kathleen Alderman, 69 Purdy Road.
What was your question?
My question is with regards to the 99 homes that are being built.
Okay, that is a pending application.
Okay.
So when that comes up, which probably will not be until late November at the earliest, that's the time when you'll be able to see the presentation.
Has planning and zoning been changed where it doesn't say 55 and older and now it reads?
Nothing's been changed by planning and zoning yet.
They haven't seen it yet. They haven't presented.
No.
Okay.
It'll be published in usually Voices or the Connecticut Post.
The Post.
So once it gets published, it's going to change?
No, 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 all it publishes is that there's a public hearing with a date and that is when you would come here and you would ask us the info. Because right now, technically, we don't know any of the info because it hasn't been presented.
And I just want to make the note that I did sit down in Wetlands Committee meeting the other day and I found it really, really strange because they're telling me DEEP is involved and our own department here in Wetlands, I'm sorry, in the Health Department, they don't get involved, which I think is absurd. I don't, you need to create a new ordinance because if your departments don't all communicate together with regards to a project of this size and magnitude, I have a big issue with it. Because when you go to Wetlands and you tell them, and Wetlands approved it this past session, unfortunately, they approved what, 55 and older? They didn't approve anything structurally changed, three-bedroom homes with children in them and so on. So it needs to go back to you guys, is what you're telling me, in November, and then it goes back to Wetlands. Because to me, that's a big change in the way that Suge is going to perform in that whole subdivision of three-bedroom homes.
Yeah, it'll be with us in November and you're welcome to.
And then I also have another concern, and the other concern is that when you have a chairman sitting on the board and after the meeting was over, he, him and I spoke outside, he basically told me he actually did the perk and the deep holes. That's a conflict of interest.
Well, he recused himself from that hearing, he wasn't involved in it.
That's not true if he was sitting there and he said, "I do," except.
That's not our, that's not.
Anyway, we can't.
Well, the whole point is, that to me is a conflict of interest, okay?
Right.
And if all the boards are not sitting down on a project this size, your ordinance needs to change. Because that's not fair to let, let's say, the school district know that they're going to have an influx of 300 kids or more coming into the school system. It's going to affect our tax bracket.
Well, there's going to be a municipal impact study, I'm sure, a traffic study. We're going to make sure that we look at this very, very closely and go over every aspect of it, so I wouldn't worry about it just yet.
You're welcome to.
I really don't care if you guys spent $1 million a year paying taxes because.
Again, I think we're just going by.
I know, but I think that's hearsay too because I find it odd that I called about it four days ago prior to that meeting or a week prior to that meeting and they told me he was only paying $2,500 for each lot. And my tenth concern is the fact that if you look at the property lines, the property lines is showing that whole community on the main part of parcel of.
So we can't, we can't hear this right now. Ma'am, ma'am, if you continue this way, talking about this right now, you could put any decision we make in jeopardy, whether we approve or deny it, because you're going against the legal structure of it. So you probably should wait till we have our actual meeting to bring this in front of us. Because right now, the developer could come and say, "You swayed our decision before you legally were allowed to," and they could do a lot more. So I'm asking you, just so we can be an impartial group when it's time, to come to that meeting and voice everything you're voicing now. I just don't want something right now to get all of us in this room in trouble, including you.
Kind of create an ordinance where all the department heads come together.
Usually they do, so we on planning and zoning get input from all the department heads with our developments, so that does happen. We're not Wetlands, we don't decide what they do, so if they're not communicating with the other departments, that would be something to bring up at a Wetlands meeting, unfortunately.
Yeah, I find it very annoying.
But that's something that, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I just feel like some people are educating certain subjects and others aren't, and I just think that this project is not going to go as smoothly as you think.
We'll see when it comes in front of us. And please be here, voice your concerns.
I'll have the whole town here.
Okay, I think we have one public hearing, RIA 2023-10 filed, 1033E, which I believe has been stoned.
It has.
On next meeting. The RIA 2023 miscellaneous text amendments have also been tabled until our next meeting. I'd like to change the order of the agenda just to bring up the A24 municipal referral next. For that, we have, for the Frank Alito, which will give us the overview of the, I think. Also have in front of you a letter and conceptual plan. So if y'all remember, for the A24 municipal referral, we hear this and then we act on a positive or a negative referral to the town council. I'd like to have a vote on that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you for having me. I stand in, I'm going to start with Kellogg, who wasn't able to attend. And as Chairman O'Reilly indicated, you have before you a memo for first amendment asking for referring to this commission, according to the Connecticut statute, A24, for a municipal referral based upon the town's proposed acquisition and substantial improvement of what is now known as the St. Jude property. I think this commission is familiar from a prior memo from Mr. Kellogg that would be coming before you. On September 29th, the town, through the town council, entered into an agreement with town council authorization, into an agreement with St. Jude Roman Catholic Church to acquire a portion of that church property, which is set forth on the Schedule A, the map, there's a legal description, and then there's a rendering, a depiction from a survey showing the actual acquisition, two lots, lots one and three on that drawing, that's equal 7.8 acres of property, includes the St. Jude school, it does not include the church or the rectory behind. And you'll see that on that map, essentially, what we are acquiring is Lot 1, essentially, Lot 3 is being included. Lot 3 contains the septic system that currently services the St. Jude school. That is being included as a necessity until the septic system is relocated and the contract provides for a subsequent relocation within 10 years after the town's purchase. So that's the purpose of Lot 3. Once the septic system is relocated, it would be conveyed back to St. Jude for their purposes. The contract is subject to numerous, very omnibus municipal conditions and contingencies. Many of them will come before this commission at some point relative to the subdivision of that property and the other approvals that are necessary as a condition precedent to our acquisition of that property. But one of the conditions precedent is A24. And as this commission is well aware, A24, Connecticut General Statute, A24 requires that upon the town's acquisition of land or substantial improvement of land for public purposes, for town purposes in this case, that a report from this commission is necessary, necessary condition precedent. So Mr. Kellogg, through his memo, has asked, has referred this to this commission for your report, and we're hoping to have your support moving forward. Of course, again, I want to stress that this project, you're, and again, I know this commission is well aware, and I don't mean to try to re-educate you on a, but you're well aware of, this condition precedent is just purely the tip of the iceberg for many, many conditions that this commission is going to hear in the future as further conditions precedent, contractual conditions precedent to move this project forward. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, let's start with any questions for Alito.
None at this time.
Okay.
I have no questions just now.
So St. Jude is selling this property.
That's correct.
Want to get that, okay. And we have the opportunity to invest in Monroe's future and purchase this piece of land. If we don't, someone else might and they could build a lot of different things on this property. Thank you.
So we're going to eventually subdivide this.
Yeah, absolutely. You have a preliminary drawing, but at some point, if this commission has a subdivision plan, you know, we had looked into whether this would be a first cut, if I like the way to put it, and if it's going to require a full application to this commission.
Okay, so you have a, didn't subdivide, yeah, we're going to subdivide.
That's correct.
So we're going to give them access through that part there to, you know that, any of that?
Can you ask the question again?
In between, we're going to have Lot 3.
Yes.
Where the church is and where the rectory is.
Yes.
You're going to give them an easement there?
Yeah, so if you notice the current law line, it may look slightly different, the resolutions that were approved allowed for slight adjustments to the law line. Right now, it runs on a center, the access way.
Yep.
And there will be an easement, access easement, mutual access easement for both the church and for the town that have gone down there. And, you know, we'll also include any access that we need for the rectory in the back and like.
Any projected uses at this point?
Yeah, so the projected uses based upon, basically, the project's been initially phased. The first phase is acquisition, of course, and then there's some initial renovations that need to happen fairly quickly, you know, get it usable pursuant to code. And the initial phase, because it's currently being used as a school for, in conjunction with youth purposes, the initial phase will be for services that are offered in conjunction with mostly parks and recreation programming. Using the gym and parks and recreation can house themselves in part, I think that's the plan initially, in that building. If we want to go beyond that use, then there'll be additional renovations that will be required pursuant to the code, and our building official has opined on this. And so that would be phase two. Phase two would be moving some of the municipal department services over there. I don't want to speak for Mr. Kellogg, I think everything could be on the table. We do, as you may be aware, our municipal facility study was performed by DeCarlo Mendel, they'd include St. Jude in that study, they also looked at Chalk Hill as well, they made a favorable recommendation prior to us after this negotiation, that St. Jude being where it's located, adjacent to the town hall campus, giving us a great opportunity to expand the campus and being able to move those town hall services over there. They thought that this was the one, not withstanding that, going beyond this commission, but notwithstanding the cost savings, the big cost difference between renovating and using St. Jude for community center. And Mr. Kellogg has referred to it as a community center, it's referred multiple times. So, you know, obviously, there's a gym there and there's going to be substantial parks and recreation use, but also, we definitely anticipate moving municipal services over there. Initially, like I said, in order to use the building for municipal services, it has to be associated with youth recreational services initially. And then I think there is an idea that some of the departments move over there. I know it's been discussed way in the future that it would be a nice place to have, for instance, permitting and services like that, where there's just better access over there and kind of limiting some of the overflow in here. But again, I'll leave it to this administration, the next administration, to decide what services would be appropriate. But without question, the way St. Jude is made up, its classrooms right now, I don't think there's an anticipation of really gutting the interior structure of the building. I think that would be overtly costly. I think we want to use the classrooms to the best of their ability, both initially for parks and recreation programming and office use, and I think it would plant itself well with the second floor, eventually, when the budget money, when the money is there to use it for other overflow, overflow uses.
Yeah, I think youth services are a great idea for the building. Now, without getting into super technical, you know, detail, what is the overall condition of the building at this point?
I think it's fair. You know, we've examined the building pretty substantially for a lengthy period of time. Without question, I will say that some of the systems, such as the furnace, the heating system is certainly, we know that it's at or beyond its life use, it's kind of a dinosaur as it's been described to us. We certainly, we've identified issues where the roof is probably going to need to be replaced at some point in the future. The initial repair is to a gym, an exterior gym wall, and unfortunately, the way the building was constructed, you would love to be able to repair the wall, but unfortunately, it must be replaced. The only repair is full replacement, which is most of the initial cost to repair that wall. But the good news is it doesn't support any, there's no classrooms above it, there's no structure above it, it's literally the exterior wall of the gym, so it shouldn't be too intrusive. It's just the way, again, I'm not an engineer or a contractor, but the way it was described to me is that it's the repair, it's impossible to make the repair, there's a crack there and you have to just replace the wall. And so the initial cost, and again, the initial phase one budget estimate also includes some shoring cost, which would temporarily allow us to support that wall should we want to take some time. But I know that it's the collective opinion of everybody in town hall that we'd like to acquire the building and make that wall repair right away. And that's, that's been included in the appropriation that's going to be before the town.
Okay, just speaking of safety for a second, has there been any, any type of testing for any type of hazardous building materials, asbestos, that kind of thing?
I believe they've been through that substantially, they did identify some, I think, encapsulated asbestos. But yeah, there's been a thorough review of the building for that. Again, from a safety perspective, the investigation of the building, the due diligence was performed pretty substantial. I think the primary concern was just making sure we shore up that wall, repair, replace that wall. And then moving forward, you know, the initial concern is, to be honest with everybody, was that, you know, we didn't want to spend too much money on the wall, per se, if we were going to do a complete renovation of the exterior shell. But it was, it became pretty apparent that based upon that wall, we could do it and it wouldn't affect any future plans. So we didn't want to, you know, throw good money at that, but we think that that's a, we're confident based upon our experts that that's money we'll spend right away. And then moving forward, most of the budget items, like I said, were code compliance items and making sure that we can use the building, but there was really no safety concerns in the very detailed report that we have.
Sounds good, thank you.
I know you mentioned the easement of the driveway.
Yes.
Do we have any information about going forward, you know, for church events? Are we going to be allowed to park in the community center's parking lot? Is there going to be any restrictions to that that you know?
The contract deals with some of that, but just to be, just to be general about it, the, the contract does provide for extended holdover use by St. Jude for religious education purposes. Second, they're going to use the second floor for our purposes in order to utilize the second floor for municipal services, there would be somewhat of a, we consider more of a substantial investment to make sure that it would be code compliant, have to be ADA compliant, and probably have to have some type of elevator system to get up there. So that's not something that's in the initial plans. So, but for St. Jude, do you continue to use it? They can't, they can't use it the same way. So they're going to, there's a retained use by St. Jude in the contract that they have the right to use for very specific days and specific times, a certain portion of that building for their religious educational services. That was part of the negotiation, that was important to them, so they can continue to do what they need to do. We, the contract also provides that we have a right to relocate them to another municipal building, should we want to substantially renovate the building and we think that it's time for us to use it for whatever purpose. We didn't want to be restricted by their presence, so they've agreed that we can remove, relocate them. So that's in the contract as well. With respect to parking, they do have a reservation for parking on Saturday afternoons and Sunday mornings when they're busy with mass, so they can, they have a non-exclusive right to use our parking areas for that purpose. As you know, Lot 1, the top of Lot 1, the part of Lot 1 that fronts 111 is also for St. Jude overflow parking. I haven't seen that, but I obviously can see that as well. So they provided for overflow, they provided for access. They've, we've conditioned the contract on trying to not include too much signage that would confuse parishioners and their town residents so that we would know, you know, the shared driveway where you would be going for that specific purpose. So the contract does cover that overflow, St. Jude is comfortable with it, and the town feels comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, that front, that top Lot 1, that top parking lot has really turned into just a field.
That's what I heard.
It's not even, when I used to go there, it was actually like, if park a parking lot? Not anymore. So just wondering, is there any thought for the future of, I know right now I use that little trail to connect myself, of expanding that or creating some sort of flow between here and town hall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, there's without question, one of the, I would say, very preliminary projects as we get into phase one of the renovation of St. Jude so we can use it for our preliminary purpose would absolutely be, and they've already done it, Mr. Foley's already kind of thought about some conceptual connection drawings. It would make obviously a lot of sense. The main, one of the main drivers behind the acquisition is that it's, it's location adjacent to town hall, so obviously makes sense to connect it. The question is how and when the library is there, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, no further questions, thank you.
Phil, do you have anything?
I have no questions, thank you.
You've covered everything.
I have another question. I heard you say that St. Jude needs to use the upper portion for classes.
Yes, sir.
So has phase one, phase two environmental been done or contemplating to be done?
We've not, we've not done a phase one or a phase two environmental with respect to contemplation. Yes, we've contemplated it, yes, we've talked about it, we wanted to get over this initial, we want to make sure that the town's behind this project, town council's been behind it, we hope that this commission's behind it, or the finance has been behind it, and hopefully the town, at the town meeting will be behind it. And we certainly will absolutely do some type of phase one. I mean, the good news is we know that this property has not been used by any type of prior, there's no prior use or prior industry that was using this property that gives us any cause for concern, but notwithstanding that, I think that's a good point, we certainly are going to be diligent. We, our contingency in this contract is everything under the sun. So we actually have an opportunity to do whatever we need to do, and it has been discussed and contemplated, but it has not been done.
All right, thank you.
One more question. The town meeting you mentioned, that's a town vote, right?
It is, yes.
So what, do we have a date for that yet?
Yes, we do, the town meeting's been set for October 23rd at 6:00 PM.
So October 23rd, 6:00 PM, people, and it's here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, people can come here and then vote whether they want to do this or not.
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And again, the dominance required because we're requiring plans.
No questions.
If anybody needs more particulars about the retained use or anything, I can have the contract with me if you, if you need to know anything else about the contract, I can tell you.
All right, if not, Chair will take a motion for a favorable report.
I'll make a motion to send a favorable report for A24 municipal referral, proposed acquisition of real property for municipal purposes in this case, 707 Monroe Turnpike.
All right, I have a motion. Have a motion and a second for discussion. It's not for the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, the local passes. We will report a favorable report.
Thank you very much for your time, but thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, next on the agenda, we have three requests for extensions. Did you make copies of the letters or you want to just?
You have copies of the letters.
I don't think I passed out. No.
No, this is everything for next.
These are the letters, we, three extensions. First extension, SCP 2018-3A3 to a five Monroe Turnpike. All right, so I have a letter from Sully Engineering. They are requesting an extension, SCP Site Development Plan that was approved for the grocery store.
Oh, Aldi's.
Aldi's?
Aldi's.
Aldi's, yep.
Original date for final plans to be signed was October the 15th, and we are requesting a three-month extension to January the 15th, 2024. No reason.
No reason?
They, they had some issues with getting the lease signed by Aldi, my understanding is the lease is now signed by Aldi, but they're still looking for the extension.
Okay.
But I do know the lease is signed.
Okay. Chair will take a motion to grant the extension.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension, SCP-201A-03-A3.
Motion I have, I need a second.
I need a second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? If not, the roll starting on my right.
Yes, to the extension, Dominic, please.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Hey, yes is habit. Second is a request for an extension to January the 15th, SCP 2023-06, which is 846 Main Street. I have a letter from Sully Engineering requesting that the Mendel Corporation is requesting an extension of the SCP to allow, original date of the plan was October the 15th, they're requesting a three-month extension to January the 15th. Do you know why that's on this one?
In talking with the owner of the property, he wanted to expand to not only offer regular gasoline, but also to be able to offer diesel gas, and he would put up a second canopy for it, so I think it's in the design phase for that.
Okay. Chair will take a motion to grant the request.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for SCP 2023-06 at 846 Main Street.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
So what, so you're going to come in with a new plan?
It's a, it's a, it's an addition to the plan.
Right. Addition's got to come in with a new plan because it's adding something up.
Right.
Can reach out to the engineer and find out.
I mean, he was, he was putting diesel in before he was adding the other canopy.
And now he's added another canopy, so he must be extending something.
Well, it's going to change the way the part, the traffic flows and everything.
I'll get clarity from the engineer and have it for our November 2nd meeting.
Any other discussion?
Is the canopy within the same structure or isolated for the diesel?
I think he's adding another.
He's adding another, it sounds like, yeah.
Sounds, I mean, that's what it sounds like, he's adding another.
I guess we'll find out.
That was pretty tight.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, we're going to.
We have to see it.
Yeah, we have to see that.
They're only asking for an extension.
Understood, it may be coming with the, with an additional parcel, an adjac. Understood. It may be coming with the, with an additional parcel, an adjacent parcel to be able to do that expansion. I'll make sure that the ducks are in a row, and I'll make sure that you have the information.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's a lot for sale next door.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
All right, we'll just go with the extensions.
All right, call the wall, starting on my right.
Yes, Dominic, yes for the extension?
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, so we have granted the request for the extension. Add one more. Eight forty six Main. Okay, the third is a request for an extension, SCP 2023-03 filed one six five one eight. This is one twenty seven Main Street, on view. Sully Engineering, again, requesting an extension on the STD number one. The original date of the plan was October the 20th, 23. We're requesting a three-month extension to January 20th, 24.
I don't know the reason for the extension on that. I know that there's a need to divide that into eight separate lots.
We already did that.
And that's not the, that's not what the extension's for. See how quickly we eliminated that one?
We did that so they could deal with the state's health. So maybe they're still dealing with.
Maybe it's, all right.
The state. Let's try to find out.
Yeah.
Could be the state health department. I'll find out, and I'll bring that back to the November 2 meeting as well.
Okay.
All right, Chair wants to take a motion to grant the request for an extension.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension of SCP dash two zero two three dash zero three at one twenty seven Main. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the wall, starting on my right.
Dominic Panichia, yes for extension?
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Hey, that request has been granted. We already did this once. We're going to go to commissioner reports next. Any commissioner reports? No chairman report. And then Bill, you want to grant the rule?
So we have four new applications that'll be coming, be coming for the commission. We're going to notice them in voices, and they'll be before the commission for the November 16th date, and they'll be before ARB to the extent they need to be on the 14th of November. Two of those applications, one for a zone change, one for an SCP for the O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and that's going to be located at two fifteen Monroe Turnpike. There is an excavation and fill permit that's going to be before the commission for sixty four Enterprise and for Independence. And then there's a text amendment for an ARR zone as it relates to twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike. And those four applications will be before the commission on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Also, in your packets, you have the proposed meeting dates for 2024.
What if we don't win our reelection?
I'll have to write in candidates or something.
Twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike.
Yeah, people, I get in, it gets me and Leon, and we get out.
We, we, and Meadow Estates.
The two old.
Oh.
We.
Across the street from the firearms. I know, but it's a different.
Again?
Yeah.
Your test?
It was my talent.
All right.
I feel like we just did this.
Yeah, they usually do.
All right, Chair wants to take a motion to accept the 2024 regular meeting schedule as drafted.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 regular meetings' schedule as drafted.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the wall, starting on my right.
Dominic Panichia, yes.
Accept.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, we've accepted the regular meeting schedule for 2024. I think any further subsequent meetings, do you want to look at the dates now for that, or do you want to?
We can look at, we can look at dates. You're going, you'll be gone for the next two weeks. So we're probably going to be in early November. Is there, is there a lot of activity and? So there's a couple dimple chats as it relates to the text amendments. There's a number of them that are out there that just want to get tidied up, get them in front of the town attorney, make sure that they're all copasthetic, and then move those forward.
Our text amendments that we?
Yes.
That you remember?
Yes, several. There's, there's a few of them on the table, and there's been some changes. And I just want to make sure everybody's on board with them. So the first date that I would be looking at would be November 6, which would be a Monday evening.
I'm back the ninth.
You're back the ninth?
Yes, the ninth, first, second, Thursday.
You're gone three weeks now? Didn't we approve that?
Didn't you just go away?
No.
Oh.
How does the 13th look?
Monday. Sorry for me.
Monday, the 13th, is that right? All right, let's put that in.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
November the 13th. All right, very good. Is there any other business that we need to?
Those are the only things I'm prepared for this evening.
All right, then, Chair wants to take a motion for adjournment.
No adjournment.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, adjourned.
Ryan Condon, you had the second?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, folks, for joining.